See you later.
Thanks, man.
So we're all moved, feel like all in the meantime, right?
Yep.
Basketball team from Chicago?
Probably turn it down.
No.
I was streaming on my phone.
Ready to go?
Okay, Public Health, Safety, Judiciary and Ethics Committee, call the order. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarzki.
Here.
Alderman Messina.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Here.
And it's a pretty good thing we're all here.
Yeah.
All right, I need an approval for the minutes of our meeting.
Question?
Oh, good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Questions? Pos?
Too late.
And may passes? All right, report and recommendation. We have a report and a recommendation from our skunk removal and grant program. No segues here, no references, but Chief, take over to Skunk Patrol.
Got it, I'm on it. Thanks. So this is coming before you tonight. Couple people had seen in the news that some other towns are offering a skunk removal grant program. So it was requested that we look into that program and bring back some information to committee. So that's what we're doing tonight. I am joined tonight by Rebecca Fife. She's with ABC Wildlife. It is someone that we have done business with before, with the police station. But just as a disclosure, we're not endorsing any particular company. But they have done this with a lot of other municipalities. So we thought, there's probably going to be a lot of questions I can't answer. So I wanted to have her here to hand, to answer some of the questions that have come up in these other towns in their meetings. So kind of as we consider tonight, you know, right now, we don't have budgeted money set aside specifically for skunk removal grant program. But we do have, in the police department, an animal control budget. As of this point of this fiscal year, we do have some funds remaining in that. I don't see that being completely depleted. So we could, if you chose to do it, we could begin it this fiscal year and then next fiscal year. Again, out of the animal control line item, you know, if we got to the point that we were beginning to get near the bottom of those funds, we would probably have to let council know that, you know, we've expended most of those funds. So she might even be able to share, you know, some of the, what the other towns are experiencing as far as expenditures go. Some of the other considerations really are, we have to have a process in place to make sure that, you know, we're doing reimbursements to legitimate trappings and not just residents saying that they called someone out to trap. Another part of consideration is the humane removal of skunks. And as you'll find out, there's really a limited, or, you know, very few agents, or removal companies that might follow some of those humane procedures. So I think that's a consideration in this whole process, too. And just, we'll have to develop a process for preapproval and, you know, payment to the residents. Similar like we do with the rain barrel grant program or any other generator grant program that we've gone through here. So with that, I'm going to turn a little bit over to Rebecca to talk about her experiences in other towns. And then we'll be open for any questions. And if council decides they want to proceed further with this, what we would probably do is, the first meeting in April, come forward with a kind of a formal approval of the final program. So Rebecca.
Right, thank you. Thanks for inviting me. I'm a wildlife disease epidemiologist. And my research emphasis was in diseases carried by bats, raccoons and skunks. And my research was supervised by the Field Museum of Natural History and the Davy Center for Wildlife Disease Epidemiology at the Lincoln Park Zoo. And I'm the Director of Research with ABC Humane Wildlife. And I'm also the Director of Public Policy Development for the not-for-profit Wildlife Control Policy Institute. So we have with ABC Wildlife 70 full-time technicians. And other than the Department of Natural Resources, we're the largest wildlife management agency, private agency in Illinois. So people are asking me quite frequently, why such a population explosion with skunks? And the reason is, skunks carry a lot of diseases and they don't happen to have them right now. It's a very healthy time in Illinois for skunks. So in the early, yeah, in the early eighties, the state tested positive 243 skunks for rabies. In the past 11 years, there hasn't been one. So the skunk disease rates swing like a pendulum. And that could be every three years, or five years, or 10 years. But right now, we're really on that high, healthy end. And eventually, diseases are going to come across the country again, like leptospirosis and distemper. And because the skunk population is so high, they're going to be congregating a lot for food and resources, territory, mating partners. And they're going to get sick and it's going to cause a drop in the population. It's going to swing back the other way. But that's not happening yet. So squirrels give birth to about one to three young per litter. Raccoons give birth to three to four young per litter. And skunks give birth to an average of eight. And
Great bunch.
And because they're so healthy right now, those young are very likely to survive this year and next year, too. So a year after that, we may see those disease levels rise again and see that correction. But right now, those skunks sure are healthy.
Well, that's good to hear.
Yeah. So because of that, a lot of municipalities are reaching out to us. And the way they're looking at it is, they're saying, you know, this event, these high skunk populations, sure, it's normal. Sure, it's natural. But it's pretty rare that they reach this high of a level. So it's almost like the residents are experiencing damages or an economic hardship akin to something else that would be normal and natural, but devastating, like a hundred-year flood. Sure, that's normal, that's cyclical. But boy, when it happens, it really is a financial hardship for the people who have to pay to clean it up. So government will often step in in times like that where there's, you know, these burdensome natural events. And that's really what's happening with skunks. So a lot of towns are reaching out to us and putting programs into place that work in a variety of different ways. Sir?
So you talked about the government stepping in, right? To intervene at some point, not, you don't have to do it now.
Can you talk about any grants, if they exist, from maybe the state or federal level?
We're not aware of any.
Okay. Even, even, oh, even with where we're at today, with the spike?
At various times, there have been grants to, once the animals are captured, have a veterinarian in town send them for disease testing, to do those census testing. Those grants have been in the amounts of, you know, something like $10,000. But now that disease levels are so low, those don't exist. So for a while, they were doing that with West Nile virus in birds. They did it for a while with rabies and skunks. But since those levels are so low, none of those grant studies are happening right now.
Alderman Sizmarzki?
Two-part question. Are skunks territorial?
Somewhat.
Somewhat. Raccoons are also a predator to skunks?
No. Skunks' only predator, besides diseases and vehicles, is the owl. The owl doesn't have a keen sense of smell. And that nice white line on their back is, on the skunk's back, is really appealing to that owl. So skunks are nocturnal, owls are nocturnal. And they don't know how bad their meal smells. So owls will prey on skunks. But other than that, they have very few natural predators, which I'm glad you point out because that's another one of, another reason why, in the absence of disease, populations can get so high.
Yeah, I guess my question was, with our city growing, we've been taking a lot of swales out, putting in sidewalks, curbs. And I noticed after we did that in my neighborhood particularly, I couldn't tell you how many raccoons I see anymore because they have nowhere to hide, under the culverts or in ditches or, and then just the raccoons or skunks that go over, so. Okay, thank you.
Certainly. So various towns run their programs in different ways. And they're all fine with us. They just work well for them for different reasons. So some municipalities will only cover skunks rather than other wildlife. And some want to reduce the number of skunks in the town because they know that everyone that's taken out is one less breeding and is going to be one less problem. So anyone whose dog is getting sprayed, who has skunks walking through their yard, they'll pay for the setup and the trapping process. Other municipalities have placed the burden on residents that you have to have the den on your property. It actually has to be denning under your stoop, deck, shed, woodpile, in order for the municipality to pay for trapping. Some of them even send a police officer, an animal control officer, out to verify that. Others just ask a caller, is the den on your property? And then if they say yes, and if the address is proven to be within the municipality, they email them a voucher, saying, we've verified your address and you can go ahead and present this voucher to our trapping company that we have under contract so that they will give you our preferred rates. We've seen very little abuse of these programs. The only instance I can remember is a woman who lived in a town that had the program. And her brother-in-law that lived three towns away was using his own trap. And he said, I'm going to bring it to your yard because then you can get it picked up for free. So after that happening once, the municipality put the voucher program in place. So they call and make sure that that resident requests trapping. And it isn't just a clever idea to get someone else's skunk picked up, picked up. But I think that would be pretty rare.
Well, you planted a great seed here in the city. I appreciate that. Big influx of skunks now. Alderman Wesley?
Could you give me a town that would have a program that forest preserves surrounded around?
That, a town that is surrounded by forest preserves? Elk Grove would be a good example. They have a large forest preserve property.
Any other towns in DuPont County? As you notice, we have a lot of forest preserve right around us.
Yeah, you know, I'm not that knowledgeable about where all of the forest preserves are. So it's hard for me to say which towns with programs are adjacent to forest preserves.
Alderman Jacob?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I'm going to be recusing myself just because I, our company, well, I am a president of an association. We've hired you guys before. You guys have done great work. So thank you for that.
My pleasure, thank you.
And if I could just mention, you know, we said we weren't, we aren't endorsing any particular company, but it is a professional service. And, you know, if the council decides that, you know, they like the service that this company provides, we can certainly, they've provided us with some discounted pricing. And it would be an agreement to do that, if you chose to go with ABC Wildlife. If it was a case where you wanted us to go out and find all agencies that maybe meet those expectations, we certainly could do that. We'll certainly follow your direction on that. But at the same time, maybe you could talk about the humane euthanization because I know there would be concerns, even as smelly as skunks are, people want them taken care of in the correct way, too. So.
Of course. So there are a lot of kind of individual operators or tiny companies operating out of their own homes that, you know, our fur trappers have a family history of fur trapping. And they can certainly trap and take your skunks away. They'll probably catch them just as well and just as many as we would. And the state makes some provisions to support people like that. For instance, they passed a law to allow skunks to be euthanized by breaking their necks with rebar, cervical dislocation, because they know that those one-man operators can't afford the veterinary or zoological methods that our company uses exclusively. We have to have a license to administer veterinary medications that requires a degree, a university degree. We use CO2 chambers with a regulator that emits CO2 gas at a flow rate of 20% exactly. Because at that exact flow rate, when the trap is placed into the chamber, the animal doesn't detect it at all. It just gets sleepy and goes to a final sleep. So we believe that if a skunk needs to be put to sleep, which the state requires, that it deserves the same level of care that my cherished family pet would get if it were sick and had to be put down. So that's why municipalities elect to work with us instead of, you know, all of the other fur trappers and operators who can certainly take skunks away. But they're going to use those other euthanasia methods like injecting, you know, Walgreens-purchased nail remover acetone into the lungs and things like that. The state had to make those legal. Otherwise, people, these tiny operators wouldn't have any way to euthanize skunks. They were, until last year, allowed to drown them in a rain barrel by submerging the trap. So PETA is always after them and after the towns that, you know, have them on their websites. So we're getting a lot of phone calls saying, okay, we had you with a few other people, but now PETA is on our tail. So now we're just going to have you. So that's because we operate like a zoo with, you know, veterinary caliber training and staff is, is the reason why we're sort of differentiated to provide the service.
I was just going to touch a little bit on pricing, too, that they have provided to us because, you know, it comes down to budget numbers and what the city can afford. What they've offered to us is a discounted pricing if, with this voucher program. Of the initial visit is a $65 fee. They would come out and make sure that it's indicated that there are skunks there, you know, not just blindly put an amount where residents say they should be. And then on a revert, return visit to pick up an animal in the trap, or would, if it was in a trap that was owned by a resident, another $65. So in essence, a skunk removed from a property would be $130. You know, as you saw the news, some towns are offering a $75 rebate. You know, council, it's really up to council's discretion if they do want to go ahead with this program, what level they would want to fund it and how we would fund that, so.
Mayor?
I got a question. So you just said they come out to set the trap or whatever. Do they have to see where they're coming from? I mean, I can tell you, for the past few years, my backyard, I don't know where they're coming from. One time it's one or two, next time it's five or six, or just one. And they're zipping by. I've seen them in the morning, I've seen them at night. But I've looked around, I don't see anything. I don't know where they're coming from. I know the townhomes across the street had, had issues. And I think they might have called somebody or something. I mean, you just come out because somebody calls? Or how do you, how do you know that, where they're living or whatnot? I'm just curious.
That's a really good question. So some municipalities say, unless we see the den on the property, they don't want to set up trapping. However, people will say that the skunks are disrupting their quiet enjoyment of their property by having their dogs get sprayed pretty frequently or by just terrifying them, you know, by being right there on their porch when they're trying to enter at night. So it's probably better to have a slightly lower burden. So are they disturbing you on your property? Are they causing a problem with odor? The way that skunks flirt can be very smelly. So I don't know if you're smelling little puffs of skunk spray in the air that maybe aren't as dramatic as the really big sprays. But that's because it's romance season for skunks. And so they're just emitting these little puffs. So when that courtship is happening in your yard and you're trying to enjoy your yard, that can be very disruptive. So you can either tell residents, you have to have the den on your property, or are they disrupting your quiet enjoyment of your property with either odor or your dog is getting sprayed? Or are they frightening you? Are they right there? Or are they leaving droppings? A lot of people will let us know that they see skunks, you know, kind of sticky, waxy, black droppings in their yard and that they keep stepping in them and they're really gross. So that can also, you know, be a burden on people.
And I was going to mention, you could even decide, do you want to set a limit, you know, one per resident per season? Unless a trap is made, then you would allow them to do it again. I mean, that, that would be a part of the decision for the whole program, so.
Alderman Jacob?
The one thing, when our building had did it, we had more of a problem with raccoons. And actually, instead of catching raccoons, it would be possums. So I'm assuming if you don't catch a skunk and it catches a raccoon, then we still have to pay for the removal, correct?
Yes, we call those non-target captures. And we try to do everything we can to reduce the likelihood of non-target captures. For instance, we'll try to use a bait that's not appealing to every animal and try to narrow it as much as possible. But it's just not possible to eliminate it. So we will catch other nocturnal animals like possums and like raccoons in a skunk trap.
Dogs? Thank you.
Alderman Sizmarzki?
Is it, those rates you have, the first time out $65 and then the re-visit, is that per animal? So if you catch two, some, two traps, is it 65 and then another 65 or?
So if you called us because you had a den under your shed, we would come out, do the inspection, see if that's the only hole they have. And we'd set up the trap in proximity to that, hopefully where the grass is matted down, where we can see the path they take or where the footprints go to help increase the chance of capturing that specific animal. That's $65. Then you're going to glance at the trap every day before 9:00 AM to see if there was a capture the night before. And if there was, we're going to come out, pick up that animal, that's $65. Included at no additional charge in that visit is rebaiting and resetting the trap. We're also going to place an indicator over that hole, also at no additional charge. An indicator is not designed to keep animals out. Rather, it's to indicate whether that burrow is still being used. So we're going to put dirt or stones or whatever's, you know, handy. If nothing, you know, is there that we can use, then we'll stuff some plastic sheeting in there. And if that's undisturbed after five to seven days, we'll come out at no charge, pick up our trap, and that concludes the service. So the last visit to pick up the empty trap after the indicator is intact, indicating that there's no additional animals living in that burrow, is a no-charge visit.
Alderman Sizmarzki?
I have a couple of questions. I guess the first would be the administration of this, the tracking, right? You just talked about, we come out, we do this, we come back, we do that. Maybe this is a question for Chief. Who exactly would be monitoring this from our side to make sure that, no offense, you're not charging us for 300 traps that just never existed?
Sure. So we would, we would assign one of our CSOs to probably handle that program, similar to what we do with the feral fixers in town for the feral cats that are around.
Okay.
You know, you develop a relationship with them, too, and just that ongoing communication. So what we would do is, we would take on the program and coordinate it. And then we'd have to work with finance for reimbursement, you know, and payment, so.
Aldo?
Second question was, this is all good stuff, but what are, what are some typical volumes for a city that is about our size, about 14,000 people? Like what, and I can't guarantee because our, we have, we do have forest preserves. But in general, I mean, can you give us some numbers on just a regular, small city, what we can expect?
Vernon Hills told me that in 18 months, they trapped 73 skunks.
Okay. 73 times eight is whatever that math is, which is, if they all bred it, right? Or could have all bred?
I think that that is among the highest volumes for towns. So I would look at that as, you know, sort of a worst-case scenario. And I, I think they have, with your industrial areas, I think they may have a greater density, don't they? It looks, just from driving around, it, it looks like they have a, a greater proportion of lawns and
Vernon Hills?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
And if you chose to go with this, we could even set a limit on the number and then come back to council for any authorization, kind of like the generator program or the other programs. That would be an option, too, if you feel comfortable with a certain amount, want to go, go ahead with the program.
And just one final question. Have you seen in the other cities you've worked in, I'm assuming many of them are stepping into kind of uncharted territory where somebody will come back and let's say, we have a coyote problem. And say, well, hey, city, why don't you start doing a coyote trapping? Obviously, don't euthanize them, but release them. Have you seen those kind of problems where this is like, we're stepping into something and now it's like, whoa, now you want us to trap this wild bird for you or?
We've seen that exact issue with coyotes, but we don't view it as a problem because we step in as an education agency and we deliver at no charge. We host free community lectures. And we deliver the curriculum that the state wants us to offer on coyotes, which is, they're prevalent everywhere and that we need to learn to live with them. So we steer people away from trapping coyotes. We teach them how to haze coyotes. And we direct people to the Illinois, University of Illinois Extension Center website called Living with Wildlife that we have a link to on our website. And we recommend that you post that on your website, too. It's a wonderful resource. It also has wildlife rehabilitators. So, so, so yes, I don't know if it would make residents turn to you more about their wildlife concerns or if they already are. But if it aligns you with more resources that are at no charge to you, that you can offer to residents, then it's definitely a bonus.
My final conclusion thought is, yes, we do, I promise, we do get a lot of the coyotes. And we, and we do have to redirect them to the county, many times, Chief, you've seen. So that's great to know that you guys have that service. The end.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Catalano, who brought us forward in the first place?
Thank you. When does this program normally start and end?
We recommend that they start by April 1st. I know that would be a really short turnaround for you. But to gain the maximum benefit is during the skunk breeding season, which is April through July. So we recommend you hurry so that you can reduce next year's population by trapping as many as you can during the breeding season.
And of course, Chief, if we do put a policy together, we want to make sure we get licensed trappers. And, and also, some of these trappers, they have to be registered with the Department of Natural Resources as well? Is that?
Yes. A Class A nuisance wildlife control permit is required. It's issued by the Department of Natural Resources. You have to take a very difficult test to obtain one. And that's what allows you to set a trap for wildlife, transport wildlife in a trap, or euthanize or release wildlife. So that license is required. And on our staff, we have 70 state-certified Class A nuisance wildlife license holders.
Thanks.
Alderman Catalano, if I could address that myself. I think if we're going to go forward with something, this type of a program, we're not going out there looking for crocodile dung deans. I think she's got all the right tools and everything that's needed for this type of a program. We wouldn't turn it up on the residents to start trapping.
And that's because it's on that topic. That's where I get back to, it's a professional service. So, you know, in past discussions with the attorney, I think there's some flexibility that, you know, even if we started with one company and if, if another company, we found that met the exact humane standards and pricing, then, you know, we may want to consider adding a additional company. But it doesn't sound like there's many out there. And I haven't been able to find many out there. So we could even start with one and expand it further with Davy, so.
Alderman Messina?
My calculator, see? I just did the quick math. If we did, if we did the quick math, if we had worst-case scenario like Vernon Hills, it comes out to just under 50 a year, worst-case scenario. And let's say we funded it at half, we pay half, this, one of the visits, the 65, that right there is only $3,200, $3,250. What is our, what, what do you guys have in that budget, Chief?
So currently, I think we have about $1,400 left in our budget for this year.
Okay.
We'll probably spend another 300 or 400 for this fiscal year. Then we have another 3,000 for next year for all of our dogs and animal stuff. You know, it varies. Sometimes we spend 1,500, sometimes we spend close to the 3,000. But, you know, I think we have to work with finance then if it was approaching the end of that to, to make some adjustments, but.
It's minimal, that's my point. Okay, thank you. Great.
Alderman Woods, put your hand up.
Yes, thank you. So mine's on control, right? So we have a crime tracking system, right? So in my mind, I'm sitting here trying to think how this would work. So if the resident calls in, that we would have a fee, minimal fee, that they would have to pay that fee upfront and register, kind of like some other things that we do. Whatever we want to make that. I, I would try to make it more minimal the first couple of years to get it going and, and reduce the population to do the most good or damage, if you will, to the population, however you want to put it. Would, would that work if we used that? Because one of the things would be, as the mayor said, he's got them going back and forth. He doesn't know where they live. So he calls, the next, the guy next door calls, the guy next door calls. And that's probably not a good use of funds to put one in everybody's backyard. So my question would be, if we're able to track it on a map somehow, could we use that system to go, this is probably the most opportune place to put it? Because we got seven calls.
Sure, we could do that. And we, because they would have to contact us to go to start this process, then we would work with ABC Wildlife to make sure, yeah, we're not putting three in a row. You know, we, we find out the best location and, you know, we do some of that with our, with the cat program, too. And we just, we just have to communicate with them.
Mayor?
Chief, you said something a few minutes ago. I'm gonna, for some reason, I have Mr. Bond's voice in my head when I hear certain things. So our, our community service officers are going to go on people's properties to check these traps. We're going to need waivers and far off, because some of these people have fences, dogs, whatever. We're going to have to get some kind of release to have these people come on. Chief, go ahead.
We would ask the residents to check the trap daily. And so their, their interaction would be directly with ABC Wildlife. And then they would be expected to check it daily. We wouldn't be going door-to-door every day checking it, so.
Because I, I could, I could hear Mr. Bond already telling me, well, you know, it's really not.
Well, and certainly, probably in the voucher example that, that we, that we had started looking at, we could probably put a disclaimer at the bottom, you know, if you accept this voucher and use the services, you allow the city you accept this voucher and use the services, you allow the city to come up with some type of waiver language for that too, so...
Alderman Catalano?
Yeah, I want to make a motion to proceed with a policy with the reimbursement, with the skunk abatement reimbursement program. That's my motion.
How much?
I had to do it, $75. Oh, I'm sorry.
Dollar amount.
It's a dollar amount for the budget.
Two thousand, fifteen hundred.
Two thousand.
Do two thousand.
Enough?
I don't know.
That's not enough.
Chief was talking about 1,500.
So, with the fiscal year ending April 30th, we have some funds right now. You know, we don't, we'll probably have about 1,000 left in that account, if you wanted to do that through the month of April, and then if you wanted to say up to 1,500 for the next fiscal year, and then if we reach that point, we come back to you and say, this is where we're at, and maybe we don't reach that amount. If you want to do it that way, we could handle it, to give a little bit of leeway, and that way, next December, if all of a sudden we're getting low on our animal control account, then we'd come back and let you know about that, so...
Okay, that's fine.
So, 1,000, and then 1,500 for next fiscal year?
Yes.
Yes.
Second.
And up to $75 per resident, is that...
Correct.
Okay.
Questions?
Questions? Okay, hold on. Let's, uh, do this. Start on this end. You're up, Mr. Wesley.
$75, Chief, you said. So, how much would the resident pay?
They would have to pay $55.
Okay.
Okay, is that it? Eugene Wesley?
So, let me make sure I, I get this clear. We claim, take the money we got now for the rest of fiscal year is 14,000 roughly.
Yeah, there's some outstanding bills on that.
So, and then you're looking at, for next year, put additional money in for this?
No, what I'm suggesting is, we have a $3,000 animal control line item account that we take, you know, dog storage and, and those types of fees out of. We take, set aside 1,500 of that for this account, and if we get to the point that we're getting close to expending 3,000 in total for animal control account, then we work through finance to let you know that, you know, we might go over in that account and come back to see, do you want to, you know, allocate additional dollars to it?
Here's the problem I have on that, okay? I have no problem doing that, but to come back here as a city council and ask for another $2,000, the city manager, I have complete confidence in our year, and the city manager, why come back to us and say, "Oh, we need more money in this account," and ask us to vote on it again? Let's make a decision, you guys got up to $10,000 or whatever. I mean, come back here in two months down the line if our, our skunk thing is catching too many, and come back here and ask for more money. I mean, it's, it's a waste of time. Let's give him authority to go higher if he asks.
You have a question? There's a motion in the second. The motion was for me to call on Mr. Woods, that was the motion.
Thank you, that was a good motion. I like that motion. So, I, I would just present that I would try to lower the fee to the resident. If our, if our goal is, if this is an issue, because some people at the 55 or something might think that that's too much, or might have questions, "Oh, I'm going to spend 55, they're not going to trap anything, then I'm going to have to call them later, they're going to do it." You know, or at least for the first year, I think $25, and they have to call in and register, like I say. You can add the disclaimer that whether it's city personnel or outside private contractor has the ability to enter your property, take care of all those things, and it's an excellent way of tracking. And we'll, and we'll get the input right away to get a handle on this. If that's our goal, is to reduce the population and, and stop the, instead of spreading out, doing less and creating a higher price, we're going to be doing it over a longer period of time, whereas if we're a little more proactive, at least that's my thought process.
Mayor?
I just want to make sure I understand, so, what you're saying is $25 to the resident?
Correct.
And 100 and, 105, then, right? Because 130, right?
So, that would be if there's a trap made.
Well, if they bring the trap out, it's $65.
Correct.
If they don't catch anything, there's not an additional 65, it's only 65.
Correct.
Correct.
Does the resident pay that?
So, what you're suggesting is, $25, the resident pays us a deposit, we know it's going to be at least 65 to us.
Correct.
So, you know, we would have to pay it a minimum of 40, and if there is a trap, the city would pay 105.
Correct.
And then, you know, we could keep you updated too through the management report as to the progress a couple of months down the road. We'll, we'll get a picture really quickly of how it's working.
Well, no, I mean, that's why I want to keep it low, because Alderman Messina was just asking the question, and the reason I'm bringing this up, because if, if the price is higher, one or two people are going to do it, and then they don't trap anything, they automatically tell everybody else, or everybody else to that. I'm not going to give the city 50 bucks, they send a trap and nobody does anything, right? Nothing's happening. So, the lower price of admission, I think, will help us execute the way we want to execute.
Alderman Messina?
Yeah, and I was asking Alderman Woods too, it, it's not bad to refund $25, if we wanted to refund, I don't know how kind of a nightmare, or we keep it, because it's only $25. We're still, $25 still is nothing, just to have a trap out there. Like you said, that'll encourage more people to say, "Maybe I do," like you said, Mayor, "maybe I do have a problem, I'm not sure. I may just pay the 25 bucks, win, lose, or draw, at least I have peace of mind." Okay?
Good point.
Can we change the motion then, to say that it would be non-refundable?
Up to the motioner?
I'll change that.
Non-refundable deposit?
Yeah.
Okay. Second, the secondor agrees.
We have another question down here. Alderman Roy Wesley?
Homeowners Association, what do we do with them? Same thing?
So, do you want to address that? Right now, it's laid, laid out in the proposal that commercial buildings, offices, and multi-unit properties are excluded, except municipal properties belonging to the city of Wooddale will be serviced at the discounted rate. So, multi-hou- housing units...
I don't, I don't think that's fair to people that belong to association, they pay the same amount of taxes as, as a regular resident.
Well, I, I would think, and we could talk to ABC, but it's really, if council wants to expand the program, you know, that's council's discretion, we just have to make sure that it would fit in, that they're not doing large commercial trappings of, I think that's probably what you want to guard against.
Yeah, so, we include duplex and townhouse units as single-family homes, so if it's, you know, a townhouse complex, we're counting those as single-family homes or duplexes. But if it's big, multi-unit buildings, those inspections take us a lot longer than a single-family home, so that's why we can't do those for 65, and they often require the setup of more than one trap. So, we really need to work that out with the owners of those big, multi-unit buildings.
I just want to make sure that that's...
Good answer. Any more questions, Alderman?
Nope.
Mayor?
What is this big, multi, I mean, we've got a couple of towers, but like Dominion has townhomes and the tower, right? In the whole area. Elizabeth Park has townhomes, we've got them over behind the train over there. Those are all, what are you considering the big sites, so I know what's excluded? And I just want to make sure I understood correctly.
Sure, let me borrow this, and I'll look up our pricing. So, I don't, I don't have it in here. So, multi-unit buildings, big buildings, big commercial buildings, a mall, a huge, you know, 100-unit building, takes a really long time to inspect.
Are you talking about businesses instead of residential?
Businesses, or a, a large condo or large apartment building that has a big footprint takes a longer time to inspect. There may even be multiple buildings involved, if they're seeing skunks walk around, we have to check the foundation everywhere, and every shed, and every outbuilding. So, our pricing for the set, our pricing for the pickup of skunks is the same, but our pricing for the inspection is based on the square footage of the building. So, it starts at 150 for a certain size, and it goes up to 350 if it's like a mall or something enormous, or a big corporate park, something like that.
So, you just, you just repeated it.
Right, we've, kind of, so, I mean, we have a few buildings in town. We've got a couple, one on Wooddale Road, one's off of Addison Road, I mean, but they all, they all have townhomes around them as well. And then we've got some off of 83, we've got like six or seven buildings over there. Those were, we considered the big buildings, I take it, or...
Let me take a look at those on Google Earth and figure out what the occupancy is and what the building's footprint is. It's just hard to count, you know, a 90,000-square-foot building as a single-family home in terms of our time performing the inspection.
Right, but what I'm saying is, some of these have townhomes around them, surrounding them, and, right, and the final action will be taken next week, so we've got the week to, actually, two weeks, because next week is the 5th, Thursday. So, we have two weeks before final.
If it were a townhome surrounding a big building where the skunks were burrowing, we'd count that as a single-family home. If it were a big, you know, 100-unit apartment building or something, then that wouldn't count as a single-family home.
Right, okay. I just want to make sure we're clear, that's all.
Alderman Woods?
I was just going to say, we can give her a chance to work with the chief and look at the different properties and dress those and give the correct answer to us at the next meeting.
Do you have anything further, Alderman?
I was going to say that, but I do, I do agree with Alderman Roy Wesley, that maybe we need to up the amount, if, if, if that's the case, because they are taxpayers. If you look at Alderman Peter Jacobs' building, plenty of taxpayers in there, it is multifamily, we can't control their policy, but maybe at the city level, we increase our reimbursement amount, or consider that. So, we'll be curious to see what you come back with, Chief.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll review a few different types of properties and maybe come back with what, what those might cost, and if, if you decided to do something different with those, you could.
Before Alderman Jacob has his words, I'd just like to make an announcement that another buzzer beater, Laola Wong, 69 to 68. China. Thank you there, sportscaster. All right, now, what did you want to bring up already? But you recused yourself, you got more questions than anybody.
I was just going to say, like, our condo building has 30 units, and actually, this year, we have, we do know there are skunks under the stairs by us, so, I mean, we would probably use it for the skunk removal.
Can we call a question, please?
I thought maybe if we go another 15 minutes, it would be an hour.
Well, that's what I'm saying. We're asking caller.
I'm getting skunked out over here. All right, we have a motion, which I forgot what it was, and we have a second, which you figure out what the motion is, and let's vote on it.
And a $25 non-refundable deposit?
Right.
To get the...
So, we have...
The resident's only pay...
Sorry. The resident's only going to pay 25 out of the 130 if there's one caught.
Correct.
That's what we're talking about.
Talking about $1,000 carryover amount through the month of April, and $1,500 to carry us through fiscal year 18, $25 non-refundable, with the chief coming back with options for multifamily reimbursement levels. That would be my second.
You agree with that, Chuck?
I agree with that.
Okay. Any more questions? Okay, I think we need a roll call. I'll just to stretch it out a little more. Go ahead.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
I'll be recusing myself.
Oh, I'm sorry. Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. Do you believe it? Rebecca, I've lost control of this council tonight, but I have to compliment you. ABC Wildlife is a lucky organization to have you. Your research has certainly proven itself well-worthy this evening, and I think, I think we've got a, we've got a winner on our side.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time and efforts, and Chief, thank you for putting this together.
That's very kind of you. It's my pleasure to be of service. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so that's the end of our skunk removal. Items to be considered at future meetings are ethics, code, couns- cancelled...
Consolidations.
How about I call it a rewrite? I like that better. Paul is a writing, a writing university, not a speaking university. All right, we have a motion to adjourn. Any questions before this adjournment?
Second.
So be it. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank the good Lord, and God bless Laola. Done. Next.
Minute take a reflect, everyone's still here. You got that, Ali? So, this is a minute, minute take a reflect, the same members are here. Need approval of minutes for pub...
Move.
Who's in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. We have a report, recommendation, quite a few of them. One, I got a change order for Horror Construction Incorporated. Is that the correct names?
Sure. All right.
Just to reduce the amount of this, 2017 sanitary sewer rehabilitation project, and the amount of $946.26, which brings it from 191,400, 191,492 dollars, no change, down to 190,000, 545 dollars, 95,545 dollars and 75 cents, 74. That's my motion.
Second.
Am I? Roll call.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes. Approval of final payment request to Horror Construction Incorporated for the 2017 sanitary sewer replacement or rehabilitation pro- project, and the amount not to exceed 190,545 dollars and 74 cents, is my motion.
Second.
opposed? Yeah, go ahead. Roll call, please.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley? Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes. Next, a change, change order with RW Dunhaman, to also reduce the amount for fiscal year 2018 road project, and the amount 46,956 dollars and 65 cents, which brings it from 387,784 dollars, 35 cents, down to 340,827 dollars and 70 cents. That is my motion.
Second.
Roll call. Roll call. Question, Mr. Roy Wesley?
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley? Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, I have approve, approval of final payment request RW Dunhaman for the fiscal year twenty-eighteen roads project in the, not, in the amount not to exceed forty-six thousand, six hundred and six dollars, fifty-one cents, that is my motion.
Second.
Questions? Alderman Wesley?
Matt, you know, why am I asked for this question? Warranty?
Mr. York?
Yes, in the analysis section, it states that there is no retainage left, there's a two-year maintenance bond in the amount of fifty thousand dollars that will expire November thirtieth, two thousand nineteen.
Follow-up?
Nope.
Any more questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley? Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, you had approval of purchase of decorative ballards as part of the city hall exterior aesthetic program improvement project, that is my motion. I didn't write it, I just read it.
Well, let's not make a motion at this time.
All right, will you make a motion to strike this from the agenda?
I'll second that.
To further table it?
Is he presenting? Are you presenting, Matt?
I don't know, am I? You have to table. Well, there you go.
It must've got, this must've been for, that approval must've been for a presentation or something.
Yeah, I mean...
I don't know how it got made to approval, there's not even the money or money involved in it.
Well...
You wanna go, go ahead, Matt.
Yeah, so, I mean, we're basically looking for if you like the ideas that are bringing forward. So, we're make, taking, this is a part two of the city hall ballards discussion, and we're taking another stab at it, and we'll see if anybody likes any of these, and if we don't, then we'll come back later, do it again, so... All right, so, if you, we all remember, we had the, so, Ballard number one and Ballard number two are, are back again for a second, a second run. We have the Sternberg Prairie Style Ballard over here, they can either have this Ballard insert, or the Prairie Style insert that will match the rest of our lights, or we can put the leaf insert into that same, into that same one, so those would be the two different...
Would that leaf, if we put that leaf insert in there, though, wouldn't it be obstructed by that Prairie metal piece?
No, the Prairie metal piece would be gone.
It would be gone, okay, that's, sorry, I'm hearing.
Yeah. Yeah, so this square comes out, and that square goes in, or, let's call them rectangles. Quadrilaterals, that's me. We were asked to try to get some lighting views of these. To be honest with you, I had a tough time finding pictures to, to show you, so I did some of the best things I could come up with. So, this is a photometric scale, so this is how, how the light goes out, and I learned some things about photometric scales that basically, you know, they show half of what it, it is and not the whole thing, so basically it would be this, you know, in all directions, since it would be on all four sides on this one. This is a twenty-three watt LED bulb, and that's what a twenty-three watt LED bulb looks like from Sternberg. Well, the goal is to not stare directly into the light, so it may not be as bad as we would think, but as you would notice from this, there is a lot of light radiation to the, to the sky versus some of the things we'll look at in a little bit, so...
Well, twenty-three watt is equal to seventy-five, eighty, ninety watt light bulb.
Okay, yeah, and as we go through here, each of these are a little bit different, so, a lot of the, a lot of the ballards that are out there are not four foot tall. This one is, this is a forty-eight, this is a forty-eight inch Ballard, industrial quality, made out of aluminum as, as all of the ones in the, that we're gonna talk about are. The second one, and I was able to find a, a picture of this one, this is an eleven watt LED, which is about forty-ish watt, incandescent bulb, but it's a, it's a straight Ballard light, rectangular, black, with the, the, the glass radiant fixture in the middle, so there'd be one LED bulb in there. This inside part would spread the light out, and it would look more like, it would have a, a roundish look to it, even though the, the Ballard itself would be squared, squared off. And as you notice from that one, there is light extending to the sky as well on this one. Now, this is when I kinda ran into some problems, so this is a Kana, this is a cone-shaped square Ballard, it's a square Ballard with a cone-shaped light. The light is radiated out of the middle of here, and it's a hundred percent downward light, three sixty of the, of the, of the Ballard itself, but as in the previous ones where the light would extend to the, to the sky, this would be more of a, a downward angle, which would not allow any light to go radiate towards the sky. This is the Cusco Open Top Ballard, so basically what this is, is a, this is a thirty-six inch Ballard, these two here are forty-twos. This is the shortest one, it's, it's, it's only thirty-six inches, it's a thirteen watt bulb that goes in it, it's a hundred percent downward light, it's, no light is extended into the skies, it's dark, dark sky certified light. So, this is the shortest of, of all the, of all the ballards. Obviously, a less wattage bulb allows for more, the shorter it is, the less wattage of bulb you're gonna need to illuminate the ground. That's what the purpose of these are. This is another dark sky rated, so as I went through this, I kinda went back and tried to figure out what Prairie Style was, and so Prairie Style basically is squares and straight lines. This is kind of a modernistic approach to, to a Prairie Style. Just a little bit different option than what the other ones were, it's more of a modernistic look to it. So, that would be the cost of, of purchasing ten of each of these. You can see on the one side is the sizes of them, the two, first two ballards are forty-eight inches, and then you have the forty-two inch ones. The ones that we have out here now are currently forty-eight inches, so, to give you an idea, and then the, the square one is the shortest of them, and it's thirty-six inches. Obviously, the Sternberg ones, Sternberg is top shelf of the, of the lighting world, especially for municipal uses. All the other ones claim to be industrials, commercial strength, all of them are made out of aluminum, so they're not gonna rust. I do have some hesitations of buying a three hundred dollar Ballard, just how long it would last, how long the paint would last on it, but then again, if we're paying three hundred, three, the hundred dollars apiece instead of, you know, eighteen hundred dollars apiece, if they're, if they don't last more than five or six years, we change them out and put new ones on, so...
Well, they do city hall too, everybody sees it. I'm gonna make a motion to go with option one with the option for, first one with the option with the leaf instead of the...
So, that would be option two?
Two, option two, the leaf instead of the...
Second.
Mayor?
Honestly, when I looked at these pictures, it was hard to tell, I asked if we could get some photos showing how they look and whatnot, and Matt did the best he could. I thought we were going for something when we sat here, a month ago, we're looking for something a little more decorative, a little more, you know, something a little nicer than just, I don't know, not, not a big fan of option one. It looks, I don't know, just too plain, too, I think we can get something nicer and maybe even save some money if we looked at other options. And I know, Matt, you just brought over, brought some over, is Steinber, or Sternberg the only company out there? I mean, I've, I've gone to some of these conferences and I see these lighting companies.
Those are all different companies.
Yeah, the other four are all different companies, I mean, yeah, these, these two are the same supplier, but they're different companies that make them. This one, the Cusco, is a different one, and the Reveal LED is a, is a different company. So, they're all different companies, they're just, you know, I was unable to find like a heavy-duty, you know, I mean, we've, so we had the heavy-duty Sternberg type, so I wasn't really too interested in looking for another one, we know what they are, we know what they're gonna, what they're gonna do.
But... But these are gonna be along sidewalks and whatnot, mostly decorative and, and at night, got some extra light, so you can see the steps or drops or slopes or whatever, right? I just thought we were going for something a little more decorative last time we sat here, and that's what I was hoping for, and I know there's only so many selections, I guess, but, I don't know.
Well, I mean, there are literally millions of ballards out there. There, yeah, I could've brought a million of them and everybody's head would explode, so what I really tried to do was, if we wanted to stay with the Prairie Style theme, which was something that came out of the last meeting as well, round ones are out. Round ones are out automatically because they don't meet the Prairie Style theme. If you want something other than this, if you want a round one, obviously, there's other ones out there that we could bring forward, but what I understood from the last meeting was, we wanted not something Prairie Style, but Prairie Style-ish, and, and also, light, most of them are twenty-four, most of the ballards that you look at are twenty-four to thirty-six inches tall. So, to meet kind of what our current standard is, is forty-eight inches...
To Jacob?
The one, could you go to the one that Mike and I had said, I mean, I think that's pretty decorative with the leaf, and if I recall, didn't you say we could even change the leaf out, like, for the holiday if we wanted, was that something that was said? I thought we could switch those out, just if we wanted to, the lens? For holidays, or switch the bulb for different colors?
You could switch the bulbs out.
Okay. I mean, I think, I think that one looks nice with the leaf, I mean, that's our city leaf, I mean...
And that, but also, last time at the meeting, there was a set, thought of, let's get away from the leaf, the leaf doesn't need to be everywhere, that's what some people were saying as well, so it's kinda all over the place, so it's kinda hard to...
Eugene?
So, my question is, is that glass that's going in there, or like a plastic glass?
It's acrylic, acrylic.
All right, so, our concern was too, that was a question that would rise, there was stuff that was raised about, if they get damaged, how are we gonna replace them quick enough with glass, I mean, if we do that? So, that was the one question that was raised to.
With the acrylic, with the leaf one with the acrylic, I mean, we could literally buy extras of those, and all we'd have to do is unscrew them and put the new ones in.
Well, the other discussion was how much more leaf stuff we're gonna throw out here.
That's...
I mean, that, that was a heavy discussion.
That's why we went with some of the other ones as well.
Leave everything in this town, I mean, I just think we should pick something else than this leaf.
So, Matt, I know, I'm, I'm looking at some examples that Alderman Woods was showing me, I think he, he stepped away and let me ask the question, but did you ever get pricing on those other styles? Cause I'm looking at some of these, and I think like, these are pretty awesome. I can live with one and, and two, but...
I bet.
So, Alderman Woods did send me a treasure trove of, of ballards to take a look at, and, you know, kinda the thought process walking into this is, whatever six, I'm gonna pick is not the six anybody else is gonna like. So, did I, so I really looked at getting ballards that were over three foot tall, that was like one of my main goals, and ones that were square, and not too modernistic looking. So, I mean, obviously, if there's ones out there that I missed, then, because it's square, okay, last time at the meeting, you guys wanted Prairie Style or Prairie Style-ish, and Prairie Style is square and straight lines. So, that takes all rounds, ovals out.
So, could we? Yeah, right here, well, you can't project this, but like, since I have the floor, I guess, right now?
I looked at that one.
Yeah, I mean, do you, it's something like this, I mean, it's not the actual, it's still very different, but it has a leaf idea.
That one, I believe, was a thirty-six inch one I looked at.
Okay, you have some other thirty-sixes that you showed us.
That was one of them, that was a thirty-six inch one, that one was a thirty-six inch one, the leaf pattern that's on it was, I've, like I said, whatever I pick probably wasn't gonna be right, but the leaf pattern that was on there was more, was not wood daily leaf-ish to me, so... I, like I'm saying, I mean, there's, there's a hundred ways to skin this cat, I mean, and I'm more than happy to go back and look at them again and see if there's something else out there.
Skunk instead, so you can save some money?
I could paint the ones we have black and just leave a white stripe on it, and then maybe we can get someone to take them away for a hundred and thirty-five bucks.
I'll, I'll take it away. Okay, so, I, I guess we'd have to put it up, I mean, I, I, I know what Alderman Woods would say, but I, I'd make a motion for you to go back, just live with one, but present us other options based on Alderman Woods's...
It's already a motion.
Oh, there is a motion, sorry. He did, he called me, he did.
They have to vote on that.
All right, well, let's vote on that.
Well, it could be taken back.
One question, one question, when we change these ballards out, are we gonna check the electrical, make sure that all the electrical's in good shape?
Yes.
Okay.
We can change the motion.
Thank you. Mr. York?
Yeah, I'd be more than happy to go back and look at them again, and obviously, obviously, these weren't up to people's ideas, but I think if thirty, is thirty-six inches going to make people happy versus forty-eight, that the ones are out there now? Moving away from the squares and going to a round, I mean, is that going, I... Because the, the, there's so many different variables, and when you try to stop at certain variables, people, there's other ideas out there, I mean, I found a really cool one that was like a circle and stuff, but then I'm like, well, that doesn't meet the, the criteria, so...
Mayor?
I mean, honestly, everybody up here could pick it, three different ones that they like better than anything we just saw, maybe, you know, if we're all going by taste or whatnot, I don't know, maybe we, council, give us a couple websites, we'll send you a couple, and, and we'll pick from there or something, I, I don't know. Could be round, for me, it doesn't have to be square everything, I mean, I could live with some round, I'm just looking for a little more decorative, something that, those look, just look like, eh, we might as well leave the white ones we got out there, honestly.
Eugene?
So, are we still looking at the lead going into these lights? I mean, I, to me, I just think with the, you should just take a rough stuff out.
Well, as we're talking there, there's already motion, just listening to questions.
So, if this motion fails, can we at least have another motion come to the floor, or consider another motion that he has some direction? Because I know you may like round, I may like square, but let's just take, maybe if this fails, we take another vote, we take another vote, and at least agree on the base, at the bare minimums, forty-eight inch, say thirty-six inch, whatever that might be, and square, round, in this, in this, whatever you would call it, style, so that he has some direction? So, that's my only comment, I guess, you wanna take a roll call?
Yeah, we'll go on a roll call for option two.
No, option one. Mike, Mike in the theater.
Yeah.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
No.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
No.
Alderman Catalano?
No.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
No.
Alderman Woods?
No.
So, I guess you have a more looking on line to do, Mr. York?
Can I take the motion so he has some direction?
Well, I just, he knows he's got direction, he doesn't, he's not voting on anything.
He still thinks it's Prairie Style.
Well, not Prairie, so just come back with something decorative, I guess, or some other options, I mean...
You need direction, though, that's probably, we, all of us have different opinions.
And that's not gonna work, you can't have eight different opinions here and try to vote on something, so...
Can I make a motion on one thing, if it fails, it fails.
You want Prairie Style, he wants decorative round, he wants cutouts, he wants this. We're never gonna vote on it, cause I'm still gonna get voted back down again. So, Matt, where do you wanna go with it? What do you...
Right, can I, just about a face?
I want to do whatever you'd like.
Whatever you like. Coming to America.
Mr. Woods?
I'll just make one comment, you don't have to be locked into the literal translation of Prairie Style and a square, and, and everything doesn't have to have the city leaf on it.
Gave, yeah, I, I agree with you, and I, I mean...
That's my only statement.
We looked at four other ones.
So you have...
Were you making a motion?
Yeah, I was trying to, but...
Go ahead.
Okay.
Go ahead. Peter?
Oh, why don't, we do have a streetscape committee, Art, what is a streetscape committee meeting? Could you guys, could maybe the streetscape committee give us six options for him to price?
Six options?
That'll be next, ten months from now.
What was the question? What is the next streetscape committee meeting? And couldn't you run the ones we chose today with the leaf, and maybe run some of the ones you guys are looking at down on that end, and see what their thoughts are, and then, let's pick out a four or five, and come to a conclusion on this?
Sure.
This way, Matt will have some direction on which ones to price?
We could do that. Alderman Messina? Alderman Messina's out.
Yep, so, I'll make a motion, if it fails, it fails, but I just don't want them to come back and waste more time. I'd like to make the motion to give direction to at least come back with something that is forty-eight inches, being that's what we have currently, and direction to use your imagination outside of the Prairie Style.
Bless you.
Thank you.
That is my bare minimum motion.
Second.
Roll call.
My bare minimum motion is to at least give, oh, sorry, go ahead.
To come back with something that's forty-eight inches, and use your imagination outside of Prairie Style.
Mr. York?
I just...
Call the order, call the order, Mr. York.
I, I guess I would ask the motioner if he would oblige with maybe a forty-two inch height, because forty-eight inch height, to be honest with you, is extremely hard to find.
Whatever's easiest for you, that forty-two would be great, I will amend my motion.
The thing that I'm concerned about, the forty-two, you know, you might have kids jumping over it, you know, the forty-eight is a little bit higher, that's, that's my concern, that's...
Mr. York?
It's not that I don't disagree with you, it's just the, what I've found is that most of these are forty-two inches, and, and then they go down from there, all the way down to like, eighteen's and twenty-four's, for like, like, you would have the one, the ballard out by the driveway, and then you'd have like, the little guy that would sit in your flower bed, that would, they would match each other, so, maybe forty-two and above?
There we go.
That's fine.
Are they going to be square or round?
I think he was looking for that direction too, does he look for the square ones?
I'm supposed to use my imagination.
So, the amended motion now reads forty-two inches or higher? No.
Lower.
Or lower. Or lower, okay. No, no, he said higher.
So forty-two inches or lower?
Or higher, it's forty-two inches or higher, that's what the motion is, so if it fails, let it fail, but...
So, stop, stop. Mr. York?
Okay, so, forty-two, and Tony wants higher...
The motioner wanted higher.
Motioner wants higher. For, for, these are just for the ballards at City Hall, these aren't for any other application that can be utilized anyplace else in town, these are just for the ten initial ballards at City Hall. Now, if we want to do them for everything throughout town, then, I would suggest, one, we need to come up with what other applications are going to be throughout town, if we have those, so then we can utilize something, because, yeah, there's some of them that you can get at forty-two, you can get them at thirty-six, you can get them at twenty-four, they all match, and that's good to go, or you can get things that live in the same family as they get lower, but, I think, there's, there's an issue between the ballards at City Hall and the ballard lighting for the whole town as well, I think that's maybe part of the confusion.
So, right now, we're sitting at forty, forty-eight inches out there, right?
Yes.
So, forty, forty-two and lower is going to be easier for you to find broader...
Forty-two and lower is going to be easier to find, yes.
So, they amend their motion to go forty-two and lower?
And I, I would say, if I'm going to amend it, and, and something that gives you some flexibility to scale up or scale down, depending on where we're at, if you can include that in your research, these are all beautiful, but if they're only thirty-six, then, it may not work, but, so that would be my motion.
Does the secondary agree?
Yeah.
Roll call.
Just change it from forty-eight to forty-two.
Forty-two, scale up, scale down, and use my imagination.
Yeah.
I want that to stay in the motion.
No. Doesn't have to go into Prairie Style, so, you're free to move around.
Creative is a better word.
Roll call.
Not this.
Alderman Roy? Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
No.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarzki?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Motion carries. It is to be considered at future meetings, first, you got engineering standards, April twelfth, any meeting, any, and, second, Irving Park Road Bridge repairs, April twelfth, anybody have anything else to add? Alderman, what, Messina?
Just a quick comment, City sign is out, looks awesome, so kudos, good work, thank you.
Motion, anything else? Need a motion for adjournment?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion, motion carries, adjourned.
I'd like to call the Finance and Administration Committee to order, please have a minute to take your note, that the same people are present for now. Up first, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next up, approval of minutes from the meeting dated Feb., oh, I did that, sorry, report and recommendation, master fee schedule, pass it over to Brad to walk us through that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, so before we get into the schedule itself, just wanted to kind of recap the memo, and try to highlight a couple of points on it, so, first question is, you know, master fee schedule, what is it? So, basically, we'll be taking every fee provision that's in the code and putting it into one document, when I broke it out the other night, it was, I think, thirty-six pages long, when I did certain page breaks, so, it puts everything in one synthesis document that's easy to find, easy to identify, and then you can just look through and directly find what you're looking for in a much quicker and more organized manner than going through the city code, which currently, all the fees in the city code covers fourteen of the sixteen active chapters and over a hundred and seventy different code sections referenced, there's, last I counted, about two-hundred-and-fifty fees within those hundred and seventy code sections, you know, over the years, it's different people have been involved, different attorneys, different thoughts, processes, there's some duplicative codes, there's some overlapping codes, and there's certainly some confusing codes in there, and some out-of-place codes, so, with certain applications, as you're trying to get a clear picture of what your fees might be, it is rather difficult to achieve that, the ease of locating, again, if it's all in one document, it would be easier to find than, again, searching through a hundred and seventy different code sections, depending on what you're looking for, we would reattest to the fee schedule at a minimum on an annual basis, which would, you know, require everybody, you know, council, department heads, et cetera, to, you know, at least look at it every year, so it'll be currency in the fees, so it'll be some, an annual review process, it would be somewhat easier to adopt, new or update the fees throughout the year, and then, also the goal of this, part of the next process in going through is to provide some clarity, and, at this point, update the fees to become current with today's standards and ideologies, et cetera.
Second.
Questions? Can I have one? First off, this is starting with which department, I know we talked about this, but... So, my question was, what, what department would we start with first?
Sure, so, conveniently, the top bullet point right there, is the document that was presented in the packet this week, included everything except for chapters twelve, thirteen, seventeen, and eighteen, which are the chapters relating predominantly to the building department, or, excuse me, community development department, building permit fees, things of that nature, so, what was in there tonight was largely police department, the water section of the code, vehicle stickers, you know, things like that, as presented, and, the community development stuff would be coming to you at the April twelfth meeting.
So, this is step one?
Step one, correct, yes.
Okay, just want to make sure everyone's clear on that, okay. Alright, we have a motion, we have a second. You have a question? Alderman Roy Wesley?
Brad, so I understand this right, on page fifty-seven, this is minor site plan review, we don't charge for that now, but we're going to charge a hundred and fifty dollars, am I understanding this right?
Director Wilson?
Sure, give me one second, if the AV guru could put the other document up there, that would be, that'd be a great grant, if you could put that up, thanks, give us one second, Alderman Wesley?
Pardon me?
Just bring the, we'll bring it up real quick, which, which section is that, because I don't have a full page numbers, the code reference section? Yeah, I don't, I have a different section. Okay.
And define minor.
Oh, minor site plan review, okay.
Gotcha.
Okay, caught up, yes, so currently, it appears that we do not, and so, yes, one of the proposals in this would be to charge a hundred and fifty when requested, or required without a building permit, for the definition of minor, I would have to defer to Ms. Chrissy for what minor would be.
Ms. Chrissy?
I'm actually pulling up the code right now, just so that I can get this correct, because there's different requirements for major and minor, major is typically when it accompanies another request, such as rezoning, or a PUD, or things of that nature, a minor site plan review is typically where a public hearing is not required, but I'm going to double-check that with the code here, just to make sure that I'm correct. But currently, it is not, we do not have a fee associated with that review, and typically, this is something that's done in conjunction with a permit, but this fee would only apply if it's not done in conjunction with a permit at that time, otherwise, it would be rolled into that process, so...
So, you know what, so while you, we'll give you time to do that, there is a motion, there is a second, other, any other questions?
I do. For the police department.
Chief Festa, do you have the answer?
Right, yeah, I apologize, I just pulled it up, so, a minor site plan review is required with a zoning certificate, which is for new construction, but it's also for accessory structures, parking or signs, it's required for industrial construction for new buildings, and a change of occupancy, which requires additional parking, so, there, there are certain instances where we may have to do a minor site plan review, and it is not common, but it is, it does happen occasionally where we would, somebody would come in and request a preliminary review prior to going through the permitting stage, to understand what their code compliance requirements would be.
Follow-up question? I imagine?
Do you do all these minor reviews in-house now, or does it go out?
We do them all in-house.
That's all that I have on that.
Okay, that's all you have on that?
On that one.
Alright, go ahead, Forrest.
And for the police department? You're raising fees from overnight parking from twenty to forty, on page seventy-three.
Yeah, so that would be for any basic parking tickets, so this would be, this is for violations of the city code, our current city parking ticket fee is twenty dollars, that hasn't been updated in decades, you know, we, we're even at the point that some people have ignored parking tickets, because, you know, the parking regulations of twenty dollars really isn't much of a penalty anymore, so, what we're looking to do is increase that to forty dollars.
Okay, you also have handicap parking in your first notice for forty dollars, if they park in a handicap, it's two-hundred-and-fifty, isn't it?
Chief?
Yes, that, that should be addressed in another area of it, and that may be a typo there, because, yeah, the, the first fee is two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, if they don't pay, pay, it's then three-hundred-and-fifty dollars for the, after a two-week period of not paying.
So...
You have a follow-up?
Yeah, I, I just think, raising these prices almost a hundred percent is a little ridiculous, but...
Well, the chief's point, and I think some of them, and you have a good point on some of them, but some of them haven't been updated in twenty years, right?
About a hundred percent at one time.
Twenty dollars, twenty years ago.
Still a hundred percent.
Go ahead, chief.
It's certainly up to council discretion, but it, it likely does need to be increased, you know, if you feel the ten-dollar increase is appropriate, and three years down the road, you want to increase another ten, I, it doesn't matter to me, you know, but, in looking at other towns, our fees are well below other towns, so this would bring us more in line with what other towns are doing for parking, parking fees.
Alderman Jacob?
And the one with temporary business license fees, it looks like, page sixty, and it looks like HVAC, I'm not sure, temporary business license for an HVAC contractor, fifty dollars, electrical contractor, twenty-five dollars, and we've never charged for that before, why, we're going to start charging for, I don't, when you say that, exactly what does that mean?
Kelly?
So, actually, we, we have been charging for it, but as we were reviewing the codes, state statute caps the amount that we can charge, and so, we are correcting, and we are now then going to be in line with what the state statute allows, so this is a clarification for the electrical and HVAC contractor registrations, so we have been charging for it.
Any follow-up?
Exactly what does it mean for a temporary business license HVAC contractor, that's what...
Kelly?
It's actually under activity registration fees, I apologize if that's confusing on here, but, the bold is activity registration, there probably should have been a break in that, that table, so we can make that more clear.
Mayor?
Going back to the chief, I know a few years ago, we re, we did some, some of your fees, I think some building department fees, we never went through the entire codebook like we're trying to do now, and get this stuff all organized and whatnot, but some of the reasons on the increases wasn't, was because of administrative costs, and our costs went up, right, so basically, it's not like we're making a money grab, right, we're trying to cover our costs on a lot of this stuff, is that correct?
Well, that's correct, and even, you know, a twenty-dollar parking ticket, by the time the officer writes it, or the CSO writes it, records comes in, inputs it, processes a payment, or has to process a mailing, it doesn't even come close to covering our costs.
Processes a payment or has to process a mailing, it doesn't even come close to covering our costs.
So I'm, I'm guessing this is the same type of, unfortunately, we didn't get it all done a few years ago, but now as we're trying to get into these codebooks and straighten all this nonsense out, get it all cleaned up. That's what, that's what's going on. I, I just wanna make sure we're clear, so.
Yeah, that's correct, that's really all it is, you know, the, the admin inbound fee that we had adjusted several years ago for arrestable offenses. You know, certainly our costs for overtime going up, towing fees go up, um, storage fees, that was to recoup those costs. Uh, we have not adjusted the parking tickets in at least twenty-two years, I believe it was back in the early nineties, so probably over twenty-five years ago, so.
All right, we'll entertain one more question and then we're going to a roll call. Alderman Sizmarzki?
Call the question based on staff, spending a lot of time on this, it's not like they just came up with it overnight, it's been an ongoing process, so. Call the question.
Great. Eileen, roll call, please.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
No.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley? Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarzki?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes, and that passes. Anything else to add? Good, all right. Items to be considered at future meetings, master fee schedule, part two. White Oaks Park District IGA, April twenty-sixth. Anything else? Alderman Eugene Wesley? Brad?
I mean, I believe based upon its inclusion in the future items, uh, I would be led to believe it would come to committee first. It appears to be coming to committee first, under finance committee.
Any other questions? All right, and I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting. There's a second? Meeting adjourned? Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes, meeting adjourned.